Consider request of Department of Justice to discontinue use of electronic voting machines. Motley County has already gotten this accomplished. Your last election was done without any voting machines. King County is now in the process of, and I've got all their paperwork, copy of it here. There is a provision for small counties such as us can ask for a waiver from the Justice Department to use the, the way of using voting machines. We're of a, of, of, so small that we can do a paper ballot and count the things actually quicker than what these things doing there. The Justice Department has run waivers on this thing. So, uh, what I need from the court is approval for me to start this process to ask for that waiver.
Are we, are we at the end of our, I think I've asked this question before when we were...
Have us out.
Have us out.
Have us out. It's done.
Okay.
And this thing, it's, it, it cost us a considerable amount of money to have those machines programmed and everything done. I mean, it's, the percentages of the, of the people, I mean, it, it works out to where it's, it's, it's a tremendous amount of money per vote. What it costs us. That, you know, I, I know, uh, the last primary session, we had to have one for the, like, on the, on the Republican primaries, and there was one vote cast on the machine. And we had about four grand tied up in that June for that time. So, that one vote, that's what it costs us with that one vote. And, and by the time you break it down, and, and, and maybe I should have done that, got with Patty and, and got a full breakdown of what it cost us per vote, but we're talking about in the hundreds of dollars per vote.
Yep.
To utilize these machines. And I would, I would, I would like a fly of the Justice Department for that waiver so we could get rid of it.
Can we sell the ones we got?
No, we didn't. We didn't have to carry them back that year. Now, if we could sell what we got, we should have lowered the price. Yeah. They may be harder to load. Well, it might not be. We might get in, we might find like Dallas County, or Perrin County, or some of these other, or even Taylor County that is expanding, they're growing. They might be needful in case. If they, if we can get that waiver where we can quit using the doggone things, get rid of it.
She cost us about, well, we applied for reimbursement for two years on that hazard grant. And they don't reimburse you everything. They're just specific, they, we got twelve thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars back last time. So, you can figure it costs you about six thousand a year.
But that hazard grant's gone, so...
It's gone. It gets...
Lower applying for that.
There is no more hazard grant.
We got the compensation in January. That's why I did apply for both years. At one time, I held off and did the year before and what we did on this last election.
Yeah.
Because, uh, they could tell this last year to us to be the last year for that hazard grant.
I know, I know your county district clerk would really appreciate if we could get rid of those machines. I think, well, that's a way, thanks for as little as you can do with the county. But, I guess I just, what I'm, what I'm asking for here is y'all's approval to start the process.
So be it.
So be it.
That's your motion?
Got a motion, I have made a motion to approve county justice to start the, the waiver process with the Department of Justice to do a waiver with the voting machine. Have a second. Little Kurt's second. All in papers. All right. Next up. Pass these around. We got, uh, I, I, I know I told everyone here that we got, TAC sent a, uh, an appraisal, an appraisal company out that, that looked at all of our county properties for, for new appraisals. And, uh, we got them in, and I, I've actually given them, intended approval, but I, I told them it was presenting this to y'all today for approval. Uh, this is the list of what appraisal, here's another one. They've got the pictures of each structure, and it's got the appraised values and stuff on it if y'all want to look them over. I thought they were pretty good appraisals. And, and unless we have some objections to any of the figures on that thing, that will automatically be incorporated into our insurance plan as replaced.
That we're on?
I don't know. Was he, we went over, looked at just, I think, everything. Was it the Boy Scout hut?
It was the Boy Scout hut.
Let me see, don't know. See, we got that down there by the, the little county thing down there by the swoon, but it's all on there. But now, if that includes the boy scout hut, I don't know.
We're, because we were talking about who it belonged to, and apparently it's the counties, but I don't think we have it insured.
But where did that building originate? I mean, who, who did it originate with? Whose was it? I mean, the county didn't build it, did it?
It was built there. Well, it was built by the Boy Scouts.
Yeah, it was a little log cabin looking thing or something.
Originally.
Originally.
And then it was rebuilt by them and some donations. And I guess now, since there's no scouts, it's county property because it always refers back to us.
We have no four H's in it, that's it. Yeah. No four H's, usually. Or half, the half, I think, I don't think it could use a ticket here. I'll, I'll check that. I'd forgotten about us having that, just cause...
I think we had it in here.
Yeah, I believe you're right.
Did the values of the courthouse and the deed set up that time?
Actually, I'll have to do one up. You know, all this, all this insurance stuff is hitting right now. You know, all the, our vehicle insurance, I just sent all that stuff in last week.
Is that brick building, tarot tire? Wasn't it?
Do what?
Is that brick building, tarot tire, we didn't have any insured, didn't it?
Well, see, that never had...
Well, it wasn't our brick building, but that was...
You know, we never did have anything in it. But it wasn't our building. It is now.
Yep.
I remember that said in two thousand. Building forty-two thousand. And all, and all of our equipment is in that building now.
That's what we're about to split it.
Yeah, it's all fixed on there. Yeah.
So, we didn't, we didn't hear anything from, uh, I don't see, uh... Rodney, not Rodney.
Rusty?
Rusty.
I, Rusty Dayton, I didn't hear a word out of him. I think Rusty probably pretty well understood after the, the deal over there on that community center that they, they probably wasn't gonna get shot at that again.
They took a picture of the bad side of the devil, didn't they? With that generator and stuff.
Yep.
Americanist, that's it.
The, the precinct barn value went down. Guess y'all, y'all, y'all saw that in here. Precinct barns went down. The tower went down four percent. From seventy-five thousand down to seventy-two, too.
Oh, there? Went.
Gutten. Sure seems to be going around.
Want to tell?
Gutten, his wife's going around baby.
Swill baby. They got shot for it.
Your granddaughter is really beautiful, isn't she?
She is.
Yeah.
You're a cute meat.
No.
She's pretty damn special.
She is a kitty.
I want to know one thing. Her daddy marked her real well. There's no mistake in that she's a little mire.
Yeah.
I keep looking at her picture and see if I can see Sally somewhere.
They had that. I think it was like, like, the first, the first day, Eric was out. She kept everybody's picture, she had, she wanted her. And she hit just a few minutes old, you know, when they let her in that woman, trying to deal. And just the racist thing down there, and just see racist thing on there. Rather serious stuff, probably, just like that. We got a picture of that. I mean, she got just a few minutes old. I don't know. I said, that's it, he's done with it.
Still, I got a picture of her in that trunk.
Yeah.
That's a pretty good picture.
Yeah.
That and with Justice Fire Department.
Under the gear.
Yeah.
He put back on shift this morning. I can't wait to see him today, find out how it was. Takes him last night, busy, pretty busy for Sunday, said.
Where's, where's he, which station is he at?
He's central. He's one.
Where's that?
That's on, uh, Grape and Dorch Second.
Always something going along.
That's...
Along in that area.
When he, when he, when he was coming under asking for the order or something, it's that, that, uh, but hey, she came and asked where he would be at, just to tell me where he was. He said, man, he said, you know how busy one is? And I said, yeah. And over at one, he said, I won't go, I won't be sitting around all day. He said, shift, you know, we'll be aware. I think he told me he had two shifts, he'd work two shifts. Said, see, never five, five times every two years, there'll be two years next for him. And he had, remember something that twenty-four hour period.
Is there any discussion about these values, or anybody see any bad miscalculations on anything, or anything you have an objection to?
I don't think we can rebuild that pool for seventy-three thousand dollars, but that's gonna be one heck of a tornado that blow that home through the way. Yeah, that thing comes up missing. I heard it was bigger fish fried in the room.
Well, I don't know what the, I don't know what they, what it cost them to build that, but in nineteen fifty-seven, that's probably about what they spent off that down there. Don't you imagine? Of course, that's like you said, these are basically replacement costs, but... I don't, you couldn't replace it that, but I, like you said, I don't know how it's gonna get sucked up out of that ground.
I don't either. Perk would have stood it.
And I don't know if we, he's really much of an official dealer, and I just wanted to bring it to y'all's attention, what it was, see if y'all had any objection to it.
Do you need a motion to renew and you sign, or?
Well, I, I guess just accept these, these new appraisal figures for our county properties.
Is that, is the renewal in there?
Well, we're, we're working... No, the, the renewal's not, it, uh, we've already renewed, and they'll, they'll renew on, on these, unless we have... Unless we have some objection to it. Actually, Friday was kind of the day they wanted it. I sent them an email Friday, said that I don't, I don't have any problems with these, with these figures, however. I had it on, on the agenda to, to present to the Michigan's Court this morning. They said, that'd be, that'd be fine. And, you know, if we, if we don't have a problem with these, that's what'll go in. And most everything was either the same or a little higher, except for our county barns. They reduced those figures some. One of them, I mean, this one over here, I think we had it on there, it was on there for like ninety thousand dollars or something. Reduced it down to what, seventy something thousand or something. And that's probably pretty, pretty reasonable on that. Would want to accept those, those numbers?
Yes, sir. I might accept those renewal figures.
We have a second? Yeah, we have a day, a second. All in favor? Thirteen. Considered offer to utilize workers' comp alliance for treating injuries. Andy and I discussed this. We kind of have our idea, but we want to bring this on our workers' comp. They've got a, an alliance deal that you can join to use their doctors, their approved doctors, and get a... Well, we get a ten percent discount going in, but if we choose to use those... Can you remember how much the additional discount? Anyhow, we would get an additional discount which will amount to about a thousand and eleven hundred and something dollars, I think. I had forgotten. I should have had that fresh in my mind, but I have forgotten.
Are they local? Which one? Are they probably local?
Well... Yeah, it's, they don't have, let's put it this way, they don't have Stonewall County Memorial Hospital on the list.
Yeah, but when I say local, I mean, local for Abilene.
Well, yeah. Yeah, they've got, they've got local in Abilene. Actually, Stanford is on there, on that list.
What would it take for a hospital to get on that list? Not only way, do you write more?
I don't know.
That's if we took the discount that's a thousand, about three hundred dollars a quarter.
You have to have a doctor who, um, is certified to work, do workman's comp. Now, not just any doctor, you have to be certified, and you have to, uh, accept their...
This is, this, uh, four percent is what this incentive to, to sign up with the alliance. We have a list of four percent savings.
Okay, so what happens if we have guy down here, let's take the county here, let's say, gets mashed. He just gets in his car like I hear, to see him.
Not passing.
Cause there's a seat here. They say we're signing with, we go down there, and you're gonna cancel his workman's comp.
He's gonna have to go through the emergency room, and then any follow-up will have to be through.
Through what?
Yeah. Through workman's comp. Someone who's contracted with their insurance company to provide care.
Well, it's the same thing. I mean, if we get somebody hurt bad enough, go there and have to go to the murder service.
That's right.
Cause then, if you drive up down there and you bleed, and you need stitches, they won't do it in the doctor's office, you gotta go to the murder service.
That's right. Yeah.
So, it...
But if you need to have those stitches out, that's where you're gonna run into your problems.
Yeah, but we could pay...
You don't have to go Stanford or Abilene, or what.
We can pay mileage, though. We could pay that employee mileage to do that. But how many workman's comp, workman's comp plans do we have a year anyway?
Usually one or two.
The sheriff.
The sheriff hasn't shown up yet.
He didn't have one over the wrestling match?
I can't believe he had one at the wrestling match. Can you?
Uh, we have one on the deputy, um, one on the road and beach. And both of those went local, but it, I mean, it wasn't something that you went through the ER for. I mean, deputy went down and got X-rays on the shoulder.
Okay, if it's not an ER, then they would have to attend this physician here.
Well, if you've signed with him, you have to go to a physician that is approved.
Yeah, one of their approved, one of their approved, yeah, physicians, if we sign for it, to get that four percent, additional four percent discount.
And if he has, like, I got to go down here or go to Hamilton, wherever they, you know, like, King Gardner wasn't in the ER visit, he ended up with the doctors, you know, because during all those fires, he sprained his back. But it wasn't an ER visit.
I guess it depends on what your definition of, of an injury is.
Yeah.
You know, so, some of them don't require ER visits. But, um, when Dr. Miller was here, if it was a workman's comp, and you went to the clinic, even if he was your regular doctor, he would not see you on a workman's comp in the clinic. You had to go to the ER. Because he was not certified for workman's comp coverage.
So, this new dude, is he certified for himself?
I mean, I mean, it's really not a big deal to get certified for it, but...
Well, here's the deal. If it's bad enough to be the ER, that's where they need to be. If it's not the life threatening, then they drive to the workman's comp doctor, can't they?
I guess.
I mean, I might see a sign up for it, but I won't give somebody to jail if you ask them how it's like it.
And, and that's kind of where we were at, you know.
Ken, like Ken, when I remember he was down in Baguio there, he...
Really?
Only have Ken, who, man, might not feel like driving to Stanford or, or even somewhere else, pick you down in Baguio, but, but I've been down in that, that too.
Didn't get that med.
Yeah. Yeah. Nobody like that, that moves take off work or whatever and drive, even ride, if you want.
Why don't y'all ask them down there if they're contracted with that company for your workman's comp coverage?
I should say, I'll make a motion to table it until we find out that doctor down there. I mean, we all got hospitals, because if we can get that done, then we can notify Kent County and King County. That would be good for a hospital, and maybe, I mean, cause I'm sure most people are coming this way anyway. What y'all think? Okay, Bill, can you judge? I'll make a motion.
We will, boy, have to pay the first premium, the labor price, again.
Yeah, we, we've got until, uh, in February to make a decision on this thing and still get the full discount on this thing.
I think most hospital facilities and clinic facilities, um, they need to increase their patient base as much as they can, not lose it. But I don't know what their reimbursement would be, you know, if they were contracted with it or not, but certainly wouldn't hurt to inquire.
Well, I mean, I don't know how long this doctor's gonna stay here, the next doctor that comes along.
I don't know. He's looking at land, buying, put a house on.
Really?
He's looking to buy another, or to buy him a house. If he can't find one, then he said, he's looking at land.
Boy, they like it everywhere.
I see this life goes to. I hope she does.
I ever seen your citizens eat fish the other day. I guess I don't go over there to even lay. Yeah, I guess that'll ever set the world, find a job, wouldn't you? I can't like, well, I haven't known that ambulance, or I haven't known who the doctor is. That's a good thing.
I know, um, on that one with the deputy, Randall Weeks was having one of that, and she called up here and, you know, first thing. And I called to act, and they called right back down there, and they got that all spread out, straightened out, you know, real quick.
I mean, I don't think, nowadays, you can afford to turn away business.
I agree. You're right. You gotta keep building your base. The thing is always if you, no, try to, you can't, if you're gonna take, start taking work with help. It might entice the people that they're not using as a family composition, start using once they're well, they have everybody there anyway, so they can...
I, I don't think I've mentioned this to, more than words. Kind of working on it, they got the county in precincts, so, you can't count that. Andy can talk to me, it's always been sometime back. I visited with Jim and some of the commissioners, uh, visited with Kay Vates, and she's the auditor of her, and on, on numerous occasions with ours. But right now, the Rotan is providing the clinic down there. And the reason is, we started off providing that, you know, when, when, what was named the PA.
Don Pond.
Don Pond, growing up there. We kind of just pulled out of that, kind of left Kent County hanging. And so, they contract you with Fisher County. It's not, they're not real happy about what, I mean, they're getting like a couple hours twice a week. And with the new, uh, nursing home down there, they've got a good facility down there. We're trying to get them to contract back with our hospital on this thing. And we made the offer that if they will turn that back over to us, that the, probably can provide nurse practitioner, Terri's, is interested in doing this. Talking about possibly five days a week, like eight to twelve, five days a week, which make it good for them, and also make it good for us. Andy said if, if, if something about, if they can boost the number of, of, uh, clinic visits by a thousand visits in a year, it's gonna make a tremendous amount of additional revenue because of something, about the way they can build that out. And that's, I don't, I don't, I don't recall now how many clinical visits we get, but if we can boost it up to where it's a thou, up to a thousand, and that should do that. So, I've, I've been talking to Kent County, or not, now the last couple months. And that'd be good, but what they're doing now, they're just kind of waiting on, you know, what's his name, uh, Callan? He's, he's trying to kind of retire, and, and they're kind of, since he did kind of step in and help them, they're not wanting to just chop them off.
Yeah.
We're working at that. So, that's, that, if we can get that done, that's gonna help this hospital, the clinic down there. And it might, it might pull a lot of folks, it's going to Fisher County now.
Dr. Holland, they'd want it to put a clinic up, you got it too.
Well, anyway, but on this, you want, you want to table this item thirteen for now, and let me find out if we can get...
I'll make that motion to table it, so, just a little clarification, if we're a workman's comp hospital.
Well, second, Dan, second. All in favor? I will talk to Andy about that, see if we can get that sorted. Okay, item fourteen. On the odd numbered years in January, we have to submit a nomination for the Historical Society. And we're in January on an odd numbered year, so, back around here. Right now, we did have eleven on that board, and two resigned. We now have nine. They, they recommend no fewer than seven. I talked to Jim, cause he's, I mean, this thing, and we came up with a list of names of possible nominees, but I wanted to talk... But I wanted to talk to him, and I've only been able to contact one set, and that's your mother's daddy, Kirk. And talk to your mother's daddy, and she said she'd get back, so I've not heard, but here's the thing, like I said, we've got nine on there now, and here's the. This is the list, it's one we're operating on now, the, the swings, Troy won't even swing, they resigned. They're no longer on, but we still have nine, which is sufficient to our purposes now. So what I'd like to do is just renominate those nine, they're all willing to serve, and then give me an opportunity to contact this list of folks. And if we can get a couple of those, or four or five that wants to serve, we can always add them to it later, but we have to do a nomination this month.
Are we the only ones nominated? And then they approve, or how's that work?
No, we, we nominate or, and, and approve those, and then we send the list into.
Oh, so we select?
Yeah, we select, you know, and it'll be, it'll be those that are willing to serve.
You think they're gonna get any grants back this year?
I don't know, they, they, that's a, they, they, they pretty well set a, a, set the, the policy in motion that they don't start any projects in the future. Until they've got the finances lined up. This last project, they voted to start it and didn't have the finances, and that turned into a nightmare.
Vote, you live with it.
Yeah. But I, I, right now, there, there's not any, any projects on the horizon now, they're still waiting on, I think, a venture too that they'd order, that's all they, they like out here.
Do you think just, just, uh, leave it like this, that you're gonna get a chance?
Yeah, yeah, see, like I said, they, they recommend no fewer than seven, we've got nine on there that's willing to continue to serve.
Yeah.
Uh, and I'd say let's, let's, let's submit that nine, and then give me an opportunity to, to visit with any, some of these other folks and see if some of those will be willing to. Jim, Jim just came up with that, I, I went over and talked to Jim last week when, when I realized we were gonna have to do this, we got this package on. He came up with that list of names and, and I've only been able to contact one of them, like I talked to Miranda about her and Bill, and she said she'd talk to Bill and get back with us, and I haven't heard back. Uh, I haven't had a chance to talk to these other folks. You know, like I said, they can board. Do what?
Look like Kirk, you better be on the news board.
I, I think they're gonna have to nominate a new president, I think, you know, Bill Wayne's the chairman on this thing. I don't think this helps us do it too well. But that's what I'd, I'd suggest we do, just re, re- submit these, these nine that's already on board, and then if we can add these others as we go. That, chairman, anybody will make that motion.
Look, we renominate them.
The nine presently serving members. We have a second, Dave's second, all in favor? All right, shoot yourself home plans and sheriff's department, item number fifteen. Andy, you want?
It looks to me like we've done this.
It looks like you've.
Kinda, kinda got, kinda already done it, uh, we, we, you know, we, when the plan run out, got a chance to, to do this thing, and. I hope I didn't overstep, but kinda gave the sheriff pass approval, go ahead and get this plan in motion so we can get it started. And it's kinda what we talked about, we now have three phones, one for the sheriff, one for each of the deputies. Uh, it's a, an unlimited plan as far as the communications part of that thing. I talked to Andy, I thought it was just a little bit high, but Andy assured me that for three phones on that plan, that was as good as you're gonna get.
About two hundred and fifty dollars, we, I have three phones on my plan, and it's about two hundred and nineteen dollars, and I don't have unlimited, I mean.
We have two on ours, and it's two hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
I guess I, I guess because my wife handles this sort of thing, I didn't realize that we were spending that much on doggone cell phones, but.
Yeah, and if you had those smartphones, I mean, it's even higher, he brought them very simple phones, I think he got, I think he has an iPhone, but. Basically, he gave his old phone to one deputy, he's got another one of those.
Flip phones?
Flip phones, but it's supposed to be one of those type ones, you know. So if you end up in a flat room, possibly parking lot, kind of quick break or something, you know.
Did he get insurance on the new one?
And Kenny here bringing you the, the bill again.
He's been, he's been, I, I quit paying both of them their extra money on their cell phone this month, so.
So, thi- this is one of those deals where the, the horse is kinda stepping out, you know, behind the cart and pushing, it's kinda one of those things.
Well, it had to be done.
Yeah, it's something that we need to do, we kinda, we were kinda in agreement to go ahead and do that, we're just waiting till we get it done, and, and. Anyway, we, we got a chance to do the program, get it set up and going, so I kinda stepped out there and said, okay, let's get it done, and then I'd bring it to y'all for approval.
And, and he did tell me this next bill will go to him, but after all that, all the bills will come directly to my office, it was just a changeover. The guys at the office didn't think that they would get that address changed before this month's due. But after that, they're supposed to come directly to my office. We'll see, but.
I'm gonna approve the cell phone.
I got a motion to approve the sheriff's cell phone, we have a second. I've got a second, you're all in favor? Okay. Next item on that thing is the sump pump, the pool, as you know, we have worked that old sump pump, we had it worked again, we have not, it's just won't pump that thing out. It'll run for a few seconds and then it heats up and locks down. I've gone online, I found a new sump pump, it's actually, there's two or three in here, the one on top is the one I like the best, that y'all worked with. I'd like for us to think about, why not just buy us a new sump pump, I don't know how old that, that one we're using now. It's Lynn Electric rebuilt the darn thing three or four times.
Well, that's the, well.
Oh, we just had it rebuilt again, this fall. But, yeah, I, I mean, I took a, we pulled after, so, I mean, we took it again last year. Yeah, yeah. Uh, there ain't no way, you're talking about reworking the pumps inside, it ain't no way we can ever just pull out of the bottom there and, and pump it out. I, I. Yeah, it, it'll, it should, it should do better, you, you know, when I get it replumbed this year. We should be able to just about, but, you know, when it rains, we get water in there, we're needing to get it out, it won't do that. We, I don't think we'd ever hit it prime where it would start, I mean, as long as we're pumping, it's full, we should be able, we should be able to pump the thing just about empty. Where we're gonna.
Pump like after, then it's.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, well, but I, I, I think we're gonna need a, a sump pump to.
Yeah.
Get it plumbed.
Get it completely empty, and then, and then, in the springtime, when we're trying to clean it up, thinking about it, we'll have to have a sump pump.
Is that hole covered up? Did he cover that bottom hole up?
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And see, what, what, what we're gonna do when we replumb this thing, we're gonna seal those. Every, every inlet and outlet that's being used now, that's always been there, it ties into that old piping system that's underground in there, we're gonna seal every one of those. Bottom, bottom, the sides.
What you can do, plum down in?
Plum down, it's gonna be, all plumbing is gonna be exposed, we'll go back down there to where those, those bottom drains are at. You know, I'm gonna build a box for, come into that, you know, protect them, and then keep the trash, as much of the trash we can, and we're gonna be pulling out, cause those are gonna, those, those are the two low spots. We'll be pulling out from all that, but that's where we're losing the water, and I, and, well, this, it's on, I have it for the whole, the whole part of this thing, but I talked to Sonny last week about it. Just, just to get an idea of they, what they're thinking is, well, not, well, he'd be voting for them. He's of the opinion that we need to do that, if we can figure out a way, the initial fill up and then a little replacement for evaporation stuff, we can handle that. It's the, it's the water loss, the operational water loss that we're experiencing, you know, through that old piping that's in there. And if we can do this replumbing, we're not gonna lose anything through that piping, but it's all gonna be new, it's all gonna be on the surface. And he thinks we can, Alana's nice to come in and visit with me, Betty, and I explained earlier, it's just one of those coincidences, I guess, because I talked to Sonny early that morning, and Alana was in, going for lunch. And she wanted to talk to him about it, she's getting concerned about it, told him we thought it could, she said, well, she wanted to find some way if we, if she had to buy the water or haul it in here to fill the pool up. And she did, that's what she said. Well, it, I mean, it, it's just like Sonny and I talked, that's all we have for the kids of this community. And it's just that tiny, basically, it's that pool.
Cause we don't, this next year's gonna work on the building any?
I, I'd like to think about putting, at least getting that new top on. Uh, I'd like to talk to Teddy about maybe doing some repainting down there on all of the, the buildings and the pool itself. A guy that comes in here to the city, it, it's one of their suppliers and all, has got the, the regular pool sealant. And, and, and Sonny dealt with the, the city pool in, in Archie.